Welcome, everyone. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Tuesday, June 11th, 7:30 p.m., 2024. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge allegiance meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you for the folks at home who will be watching this afterwards. Here is tonight's agenda. We have, as is customary, we'll be doing our financial reports. Then we will have some, we have a public hearing, a continued public hearing on the proposed establishment of a town sewer district. And then we, as part of the agenda, will be contemplating taking action on establishing the town sewer district. We have Randy Nelson from Tye and Bond with us again tonight. So what I think we'll do is we won't do the full-blown presentation again because it seems like we have the same folks as we did last time, but we will get some updates on that, on what we are doing so far. We've got some resolutions extending some professional services contracts. We'll be accepting a tributary restoration grant. We were awarded some monies for culvert replacement. And we'll be discussing some more grant opportunities. The state, most of the state grants are due as part of what's called an consolidated funding application process. It's due this year at the end of July. Various departments and grant opportunities there. We've got a couple of requests from the highway department, a quote for brine equipment. If you've been following along, we had a presentation from the Rhinebeck Highway Department on how brine can save us money and manpower potentially during the middle of the night if we prep our roads with brine beforehand and how successful they've been utilizing that. We don't really have much in the way of moratorium waiver applications tonight. We do have a little bit of correspondence. Okay, a couple of announcements very quickly. Rebuilding Together. There is now the period opening for applications. And so, folks, if you know of somebody who could use some assistance with free repairs for their home, you know, please reach out. Here's the contact information. You can go on the town's website. There's the telephone number, and it's RT Hudson Valley Dar. Or the application cycle is now open. All right. Other announcements. We have Red Hook Rhinebeck has a combined pride parade, June 22nd, from 10 to 1 p.m. in the village of Red Hook. I believe actually Tively has their pride parade the 15th, so this weekend, from 10 to 1 as well. And that's all I have in the way of announcements. Does anybody else have any announcements that they would like to make? Okay, why don't we keep moving? We have the supervisors' reports, as I mentioned earlier, the first meeting of the month. We give you a snapshot of the financial condition, basics, if you will, of the town at any moment. This is for the period ending May 31st. We started with an opening balance of eight million nine hundred and six thousand nine hundred and sixteen, had receipts of 1.6 million and change, dispersments of 1.854, ending balance of eight million six hundred and seventy-four, eight sixty-two. You have in your packet a variance report as well, some budget adjustments as proposed by our goalkeeper and Conway. You also have, I think I wrote this, the, and reports should be here. Unfortunately, they're facing the wrong way on the screen. We don't know if you'll get busy, but they are available in the clerk's office and on the web. Any questions about the budget adjustments for this supervisor's report? If not, a motion to accept the supervisor's report.
Second.
All in favor, Christine?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Clerk's report, Alex, do we have a clerk's report for tonight? I think we do, right?
Yeah. Town clerk's report for the period of May 1st to May 31st, 2024. Local law shares remitted the supervisor $6,940.18. Amount paid to New York State agricultural markets for the spade unit program, $24. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for the marriage licenses, $90. Amounts paid to the New York State Environmental Conservation for honey and fishing licenses, $485.82. Total state, county, and local revenues, $7,540.
Okay. And you have some vouchers as well?
The abstract reported, reported and approved for payment with vouchers, 32,023 through 32,110, totaling $272,590.08 were processed in the month of May, 2024.
Motion to accept the clerk's report?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
William, myself. Okay, very good. Why don't we go right into our public hearing notice? Alex, if you would be kind to read that, please?
Please take notice that the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, New York, will meet in Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, on the 11th day of June, 2024, at 7:35 o'clock p.m. prevailing time, for the purpose of conducting a public hearing upon proposal by said Town Board to establish sewer district number one as described in the map plan and report on file with Town Clerk, at which time and place said Town Board will meet to consider such proposal and hear all persons interested in the subject thereof and concerning the same. The following is a true and complete copy of the resolution and order calling such public hearing. Town of Red Hook, Resolution Number 34 of 2024, dated May 13th, 2024, in the matter of the establishment of Town of Red Hook Sewer District Number One to finance district improvements and authorizing the construction of improvements, including a district collection system connection to the Village of Red Hook Sewer System and expansion of the Village of Red Hook Sewer Treatment Plan. The Town of Red Hook and the County of Dutchess, State of New York pursuant to Article 12(a) of the Town Law, a resolution and order accepting a map plan and report and scheduling a public hearing pursuant to the section 209d of Town Law. Whereas at the request of the Town Board, the Town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, New York, the Town, Tye and Bond Engineering and Landscaping Architecture, P.C., a competent engineer duly licensed by the State of New York, the engineer has prepared a map plan and report dated May, 2024, the MPR, and such MPR has been filed in the office of the Town Clerk of the Town of Red Hook and submitted to the Town Board. Whereas the MPR provides for the creation of a new sewer district to be known as Sewer District Number One, to include the property described Exhibit A attached hitherto, generally described as being within a portion of the town in TND zoning district south of the Village of Red Hook along Route 9, excluding the TND, our district located west of Route 9, for the purpose of providing sewer service to serve 51 parcels, 50 tax parcels in the town. Whereas the proposed improvements are further described in the MPR, including construction and equipping of a collection system of approximately 10,123 linear feet, utilizing a septic tank affluent pump step system connection to the Village of Red Hook Sewer System and expansion to the existing Village of Red Hook Sewer Treatment Plant to provide capacity for an additional 50,000 gallons per day and related improvements and equipment. And whereas the maximum amount proposed to be expended for the proposed improvements described in the MPR is $6,596,000. And whereas the estimated cost of hookup fees within the proposed sewer district number one is as follows. $20,000 to $35,000, depending on the size of the septic tank, step tank, provided that to the extent of the available funds, the base hookup fee, excluding specialized fees for site-specific requirements such as restaurant grease traps, may be included in the initial capital project and waived from properties hooking up within the initial designated construction period. And the MPR includes a detailed explanation of how the estimated cost of hookup fees was computed. And whereas a portion of the improvements described in the MPR consists of improvements to the village sewer system pursuant to the proposed intermunicipal agreement, IMA, in order to provide for use of such system in the proposed sewer district number one. And the cost of expansion is anticipated to be paid in part by the village and in part by the town sewer district number one on the basis of a reasonable method of allocation based on the 50,000 gallons per day share of dedicated capacity required for sewer district number one, as described in the MPR. And whereas the plan of financing set forth in the MPR indicates that the town anticipates the issuance of its obligations pursuant to the local finance law to pay the costs of the improvements. And whereas the proposed plan of financing is expected to result in a total annual cost of $2,602, the typical sewer district number one property assumed to be assessed capital cost based on one EDU, that being the mode of all properties in the district, proposed district, for the first year in which the operation, maintenance, debt service, and other charges and expenses start to be paid. And the NPR includes a detailed explanation of how much such estimated annual cost was computed. And whereas the proposed plan of financing is expected to result in a total annual cost of $2,602 to a typical sewer district number one, one or two residential, one or two-family residential property to be assessed capital cost based on one EDU, that being the mode of such resident properties in the district for the first year in which operation, maintenance, debt service, and other charges and expenses are to be paid. And the MPR includes a detailed explanation of how such estimated cost was computed. And whereas the proposed method of portioning the cost of construction improvement of sewer district number one is to assess the costs entirely against the lands benefited thereby, being the entire area of sewer district number one, and to assess levy and collect costs from the several lots or parcels within such benefited area and just proportionate the amount of benefit which the improvement shall confer upon such lots of parcels based on the number of EUs as described in the MPR. And whereas the MPR is on file in Town Clerk's office, is available for the public inspection. And whereas the Town Board has hitherto forward declared the action shall be an unlisted action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and declared its intent to be the lead agency. Now therefore be hereby resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, New York, by the favorable vote and not less than the majority of all the members of the board as follows. Section 1, the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook hereby determines that the MPR is in compliance with the requirements of section 209(c) of Town Law in regard to the establishment of sewer district number one and its improvements described therein. Section 2, the Town Board directs that the MPR shall be entered in its minutes and that it be made available to the rearview by the public in advance of a public hearing scheduled herein in the office of the Red Hook Town Clerk in the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, during regular business hours. Section 3, the Town Board shall meet and hold a public hearing on May 29th, 2024, at 7:55 p.m. at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all persons interested in the subject concerning the establishment of sewer district number one with a maximum total estimated cost of $6,596,000, of which $2,143,000 is estimated to be allocated to the construction of the improvements to facilities in the Village Sewer District pursuant to the proposed intermunicipal agreement and for such other action on part of the Town Board with relation thereto, as may be required by the law. Section 4, the Town Clerk hereby authorized and directed to cause a certified copy of this order to be published at least once in the Poughkeepsie Journal. The official newspaper of the Town of Red Hook, the first publication thereof, will not be less than 10 days nor more than 20 days prior to the date of said hearing. Section 5, the Town Clerk is further authorized and directed to post a certified copy of this order on the signed word in the Town Hall, maintained in the Town Hall not less than 10 days nor more than 20 days before the public hearing, and within the same timeframe to mail a copy of this order to the property owners of record in proposed sewer district number one as set forth in Exhibit A annexed hitherto. Section 6, at said public hearing, the Town Board will hear all comments in regard to proposed establishment of sewer district number one as described in the MPR. Section 7, this order should take effect immediately. Please take further notice that a copy of said map plan and report is available for review here at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All interested persons will get an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 8457584606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated May 29th, 2024, Anna Conferent, Town Clerk, and the attachments from that resolution are up here.
Thank you very much, Alex. That was a lot to read. We appreciate it. That's a requirement by law that we read the entire notice. And thank you all for being here again for the public hearing. Just a quick recap and an update for you all. When we were together last, a couple of weeks ago, we spoke about the importance of needing to form the district quickly, not only because we have people who need to get going with their properties and developing, but more importantly, because this is the year money has been appropriated for in particular rural water and wastewater projects. We also told you that we are contemplating, and I think I can speak for the board, and will appropriate some ARPA monies towards these projects, once it, it looks like we're moving forward with that. We have to assign ARPA funds by the end of the year, so that's also part of the urgency there. The update that I do have is we did receive word from Senator Jill O'Grady's office that our requests are congressional direct spending requests of a million dollars did make it to the recommended list. And I want to caution you, however, that there are a lot of projects that do make it to that list, and not every one of them gets funded. But suffice it to say, had it not made it to that list, we would not be in the running to get that million dollars. So we've already seen a step in the right direction there. We spoke to you about the need to talk to the village about the O and M rate, and so I'm pleased to report that after several conversations and discussions between the attorneys and the town and the village, and with thanks to Mayor Smythe and others, that we have negotiated a contract, an IMA rather, that deals with the costs associated with the town's portion of the sewer district. And what we are looking at now is for the town to be paying for its share of the system. The only, I guess, adder would be that we will have to pay for a little bit of their engineering to just to review the work that is being proposed that's going to connect into the village plan. So that's very good news. We spoke about the need of trying to bring that annual O and M cost down. We also have identified, and thank you all who took some time to meet with me, I very much appreciate that, my office, and to hear from you and some of your concerns. Two things that we've heard essentially relate to residential and affordable housing, and obviously anything that we do that could add a cost to already existing affordable housing, we wouldn't want to have a negative impact. Certainly, we wouldn't want to displace people who are in our more affordable housing options within our community. So therein, I would like to direct you to what we did years ago and updated last year, which is to take some of those incentive zoning fees. We have a dedicated incentive zoning fund to remind folks, if you develop in our TND, just like Tradition did, you can get bonus density if you put money into this incentive zoning fund. We have directed those monies towards assisting the creation of affordable housing up at the Cooking Ham Farm, but we also can direct some of these funds to existing housing apartments and so on and so forth, because as we discovered, those of us who are part of the county task force a couple of years ago, it's all about interventions, and your intervention could be the creation of new housing. It could also be just providing financial support to keep folks in those affording affordable housing options. We can look at residential and take a look at that and see what we can do to further lower the cost in those situations. So I think those are the updates that I have. We will be applying for this grant later this week. I think you, we explained to you, it's an intermunicipal grant. We're one of the few municipalities that qualified for it because both the village and town are involved on some level because they have the package plant up in their municipality. We're applying for roughly $2.5 million there. So you can quickly start to see how that $6.5 million number, where we've got a plan to try and chip away. But what we cannot do is apply for any other grants until we have the district formed. And we quickly need to have that district formed, which is why we are contemplating taking that action tonight immediately following a public hearing. That said, I make a motion that we open the continued public hearing if there are second things. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
And Jacob?
Aye.
Very good. Who would like to speak on this issue? Mr. Ross, would you kindly come up to the microphone and tell us that you are Bob Ross?
All right, they know. I'm Bob Ross, as you well know. I have two questions. One, I think you're doing the right thing here, but more importantly, I've got a concern with the cost of the, as you brought up, of the existing people that live in behind here and over there and then thing. I mean, I, I gotta look at those numbers, and they, if we don't get that insulation cost down, we're going to drive a lot of people out right there. That's a big issue. The other issue I have, and I think you brought that up, so I just wanted to restate that. It's a big issue with a lot of people in town. And then the other issue I have, you and I spoke, I don't know, back in this hallway here afterwards, you had said that we can continue to go to the planning board and they have to review it. And then, you know, as soon as this thing gets passed, or even prior to, if the health department permits it, you, we can build. It's been eight years. Well, the planning board tells me something different than what I spoke to you. It's, you know, we can't even consider anything. And I've been on a lot of sewer boards in a lot of counties up in the Boston area, and granted, that's mass, and this is New York. But there's no need to shut down the whole district when a sewer is going to go in. So my question to you again tonight is, where do we stand on that issue from a personal perspective?
Sure, sure. So Bob, you did have an initial meeting with the planning board, is that correct?
Yes.
And you had like a pre-schetch conference, and they gave you some feedback?
Yes.
Have you been back to, have you been back to say, and I think we continue to offer, let me just finish. I think we continue to offer, if I'm not mistaken, that you can meet with the planning board chair and, and consultant in a pre-conference type of setting, get, get some feedback so you can keep working on your project, so you're ready to go?
Right.
Okay. So continue to, have you done?
And I did do, yes.
Have you done that? Have you made the suggested changes?
Yes. And she made very clear to me that, no, we can't even consider anything the way it's written.
Understandable, but you, you can still, you can still meet. The, the Town of Red Hook has always offered to have a pre-schetch conference with the planning board chair consultants. We have always done that over the years. You can continue to do that as you progress your project, and then you'll be ready for full board review. So have, have, you, you got some feedback? Have you made changes relative to that feedback?
Yes, and she said, no, we, we can't consider it.
Okay, so just, we'll clarify that, that all you're looking for is to continue to go in front of the chair and the consultant.
I want to get the whole thing clarified, and I just don't want to hear about another holdup, another eight years with a Michelle Gray contract.
Well, okay, but, but in fairness, I mean, I think you, you guys were trying to figure out what you were doing with your property, right? I mean, I don't think there was an application.
Eight years wasn't the planning board.
Yeah.
First five were. You're right. First five were from our little brother Timbo. He kept coming and coming and coming. Michelle had this, then she couldn't decide on the lighting, she couldn't decide on the trees or something like that.
Well, let's, let's look forward, and we want exactly what you want. The same thing is we want you ready, because when, when the pipe's there, we want you ready. We want to be able to just hook it up.
Well, now the question is, when do you think the pipe might be there?
We gotta get this district formed. You see how fast we're moving?
Well, the other question is.
We're moving, we can't move any faster than we are, so.
I know that.
As soon as we get enough money, it's, it's that, it's that balance of the two. If we get this grant, I mean, I think if we get this one grant, we're, we're going to be in a much better place, so.
The two and a half.
Well, the two and a half, and then if we were to get the million, plus we have ARPA money, plus we have incentive zoning money. I mean, it's already, it's already significant. If we were to get all of it, right? So let us.
Fantastic, but my, my question's still right. We get this thing all done, and they're okay. We know we've got more than enough to build temporarily, not temporarily, permanently, but we would do it temporarily, to address the sewer issue for this building on the lot that it is. I mean, there was 10 times on there before this.
Let's, let's see what.
Will you hold us up because of that?
Let's see, let's see what Department of Health might allow in this situation when they know sewer's coming. Let's see what, but if we don't form a district.
I understand, and we're going to do that, from my understanding.
Well, let's hope so. But, you know, again, we, we have to see. But we hear you. You're waiting to, to go. Other, other folks are waiting to correct their septic issues, and we're also sensitive to the fact that we have residential owners. So we want to move quickly and get as much money as we can. And the sooner we form this district, you're going to see, in the next few meetings, we're going to be applying to other places for more money. We're going to have.
We get almost insulation cost for no.
No. No. No, I want to, I want to manage your expectations. That's not going to happen.
So I'm assured, well, you got three and a half of the six and a half.
Well, don't count, don't count your chickens. We don't have, we don't have anything but the money we know that we have that we can appropriate here, okay? But for now, we, we're, we're in as good a place as we thought we could be today, but we have to form a district, okay? That's the first thing. So we can send out more grants, and in the coming months, we'll be able to say, we got this, we can get this, and come back to you. The whole idea is we're going to come back to you all and report to you how we're doing so that you understand we are, where we are, because at some point, we're going to have to say, okay, let's go, because there are folks like you who are eager and folks, you know, who maybe are more concerned about ultimately what, what that cost will be. But again, I want to remind you that the numbers that we have, first of all, in the map plan and report, only relate to the cost, because that's what's the requirement by law.
Right.
The cost to you will be ultimately what we get it down to, we go out to bid, the construction, so on and so forth. During that time, and I mentioned to you, one of the other things that we'll be doing is meeting with the hotel developer, meeting with other property owners, and trying to get the number of EUs up, because as those numbers go up, the overall cost logically should go down. Okay? Does that make sense?
Right, but you're not going to drop us to build more than we're ready to build there, I hope.
I'm not talking about your property. I'm talking about the law. So, okay.
All right.
So, any other questions?
We're just interested in that, we can read the notes again, but about the, how the, maybe the tenants could get a forum that they could.
Right. So I want you to look up our code incentive zoning, okay? So what this board did last year was change the uses. And this is important, because I think you hear and have heard over the years about Tradition, how Tradition was supposed to be an affordable project and so on and so forth. Not true. It never was advertised as such. Folklore sometimes, you know, carries.
But Robert, in fairness, then the price point more than doubled because of the holdups. It almost, it did double.
Okay, but you're gonna, you're gonna have to run for office to be next to mayor, okay? So you can take a little bit. But I, no, I just want to make this point clear, because it's very important. Because they were, they decided to go for the bonus density and pay into those incentive zoning fees, we now have money to support affordable housing units, to create affordable housing units. So to say that that didn't create any affordable housing is technically true, but not anymore, because we are deploying those funds towards other places to help sustain affordable units, which we have here in our community. We have one of the most economically diverse communities. We have one of the most diverse communities when it comes to housing types that you'll see in, in Dutchess County and perhaps even in this region. So we recognize that. We've been preparing for all of these things for two decades now and putting in place the tools so we can respond appropriately to the feedback and to the economic conditions. So look up incentive zoning, you go to Town of Red Hook, general code, Google it, and then, and certainly just email me, we'll, we'll send you that local law so you can see it, because as some of you have expressed to me, you're, you're concerned about the potential impact that there could be to your tenant. So we have that flexibility because of the way we wrote the law, so. So basically, we're, I guess we're just kind of putting our trust in all you folks up there. You are putting your trust in politicians. I know, that's a bad thing. All I can tell you is we want what you want, generally speaking. I mean, everybody has individual goals for their property. We have, we have a couple of properties that have no plans to develop out that are vacant, but they recognize just how good it would be for the value of their properties to have greater flexibility and utility. We, we have shared goals here. Um, we, we have shared goals here. I, I know you want to have operating septic systems in, in, on your properties. And some of you, uh, have or intend to have a lot going on on your properties, which is great. That's why the zoning was written that way, to provide you with the greatest amount of flexibility and, and lot coverage, quite frankly. Um, and we want that to be, we want this whole area to be a dynamic place. We've put in place all the infrastructure besides sewer and almost water throughout the district. Um, it won't be too hard to get more water down there now um, to the remaining spots that don't have it. So, uh, we, we share your goal. You know, we're not gonna go to all this trouble to get all that money to build affordable housing, only to watch us lose it somewhere else in town. That makes no sense. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. What else? Do you have an engineer here? John?
If you, uh, you're saying that the, the cost is gonna be around six million dollars?
Uh, the cost is about, I think we projected six point five million dollars.
Six point five, and you can, at this point, possibly have three and a half million.
Well, see, again, I wanna manage expectations. We have identified
I, okay, you've identified.
Three and a half that we are applying for. We also have something not nearly as substantial that we can, you know, use to supplement that.
Okay, so at that point, theoretically, let's say theoretically, that you come up with four million dollars. Where does the, the extra two million come from?
To death.
So, yeah, we, we find, we will finance that, um, and we're likely to get very low interest rate loans from the state, or else we ourselves as, as a municipality.
And then we would pay that back through our taxes?
So that's in your, that was in that, uh, O and M and capital cost. So that is the, so if, I'll give you a rough, if for the first year, again, for the first year, because as the ADUs go up, we hope that some of that annual, so if there was a twenty-six hundred or whatever for an Edu, if that gets cut in half to thirteen hundred, um, then there would be that annual payment. The benefit, one of the benefits we, and thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. One of the benefits is you will never wake up and have a giant sewer bill, individual septic bill, to pay for. Um, you will also hopefully never wake up and have a problem because your neighbor's septic, um, had a major problem. These are the benefits, and you will have an annual payment. So I think at one of the meetings, I said, you know, we have somebody in the district who's looking at a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars to replace their septic systems. I mean, it's so much more beneficial to them to have an annual payment than, you know, keep that money in the bank earning four or five percent interest than it is to, um, you know, just sort of roll the dice. Yeah. Okay. Very good. Well, um, as, as I said again, uh, before we close the public hearing, we'll keep in touch with you. You'll have follow-up questions, just shoot them. You're gonna be in the hallway, right?
Ask a question.
The way you say, the way you said it was like in the hallway. Don't, don't feed into that logo, the hallway.
Well, I, I didn't, I just said that, that was my understanding, and then when I went down to the planning board, it was completely different from what I think.
Keep, keep meeting with the planning board chair and consultant and get your project ready, okay? And then when you go in front of the full board, you're ready. Okay? Okay. All right, um, at this time, I also like to reference that we did have, um, more responses. We did our secret work at yesterday mornings, um, meaning we did also hear back from, uh, what was our most recent one, Kathy, we got back was?
DOT.
County Health.
Yeah, DOT.
DOT, right, DOT. Um, DOT because we intend to use the right of way, um, to make life easier. And just as a reminder for some of you who, uh, asked this, during the design phase, the engineers will meet with you about your property, so that it's designed in such a way that works with your property and also the system as well. So there'll be, your input is gonna be needed for that, um, when, when the time comes. Okay. Um, very good. Uh, I think we have covered everything that we need. So at this time, um, and we had all our referrals back to us. We had a, a secret neck deck yesterday. Um, I think we're good to go here on our first resolution.
Do we need to close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
How many motions that have closed the public hearing?
Thank you, Christine. Is there a second? Okay, and Jacob?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Myself. Thank you very much, and thank you all very much for coming again tonight. Um, we have resolution, what are we on, fifty-two or something?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, okay. So we'll start out with folks, if we could. I think I referenced the intermunicipal agreement with the village of Red Hook regarding the sewer district number one project. And again, thank you to the, uh, mayor and to the trustees there. You know, I think it goes to the issue we talked about, O and M's, that we do have an IMA in front of us. Did you all have any questions about, um, that? Okay, so the Town of Red Hook is proposing to create a municipal sewer district pursuant to Article twelve A of the Town Law Project to serve the T and D corridor as set forth in a map planner report dated May twenty twenty-four. Um, it's proposed to discharge to the existing Village of Red Hook sewer plant, and, uh, it's pursuant to this agreement. Um, I won't go into too many of the whereas's, but we did, uh, adopt a negative declaration, meaning that we expect that we'll have, um, no, uh, significant, uh, negative impacts. And then we did so yesterday, June tenth, twenty twenty-four. Good night, all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, that's resolution fifty-one. Would somebody like to move that?
I'll move.
Thank you, Christine. Is there a second?
Second.
Jacob, all in favor? Julia?
Aye.
William, I guess on nine of fifty-one. Um, let's, uh, make the agreement as of the eleventh of June, now that it's been passed. Uh, resolution fifty-two, so this is what's commonly called a Monroe. Um, what we are doing for the folks at home is we're to obtain this resolution, determining the applica, application of town zoning laws to the sewer district project. We have determined that the, uh, project is something the town board should handle and should not go in front of the planning board, that we are the best, uh, agency to handle it. There's a nine-point test, um, that relates to the nature of scope and the granted authority, kind of function, um, the effect on, um, uh, the land use regulations would have on the sewer district, alternative locations, um, local interests, uh, alternative methods of providing the proposed improvements, and the intergovernmental. Let me try that again, intergovernmental participation in the project development process and an opportunity to be heard. Um, resolution fifty-two, uh, we have undertaken review of the project in order to determine whether and to what extent the Town of Red Hook zoning law applies. And, uh, we have determined um, that the project has been, um, a discussion at, uh, the last several meetings. And the project will be subject to approval by the Village of Red Hook regarding the intermunicipal agreement, which they did agree to, uh, last night at their meeting, and the construction of the plant dispatch to serve sewer district number one. We held a public hearing May twenty-ninth and continued it tonight to give interested parties an opportunity to be heard. Um, we solicited comments from county planning, planning board, D E C, um, state E F C, county, uh, health, and, uh, state historic preservation office. And you saw the comments from SHPO, that they actually like to see the plans for the pipe underneath, once it's designed. Okay, um, I'll move fifty-two, determining, determining the application of the zoning laws. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, uh, fifty-three is actually establishing the sewer district. It's a resolution for the, approving the establishment of sewer district number one pursuant to sections two oh ninety of the Town Laws. And this, um, is to finance district improvements and authorizing construction improvements, including a district collection system action to the Village of Red Hook, and expansion of the Village of Red Hook sewer treatment plant in its own Red Hook. And it recites what I have already told you, which is that the R provides a new sewer district, describes where that district is, how many parcels, the approximate cost, estimated cost before any grants or appropriations, what the cost would be if you had to connect at a later date, plan of financing, um, the, uh, estimated EDV cost, recites the public hearings we've had, the resolutions we've adopted, and, uh, importantly, it identifies the properties that are benefited with the exhibits. I'm very pleased to move resolution fifty-three.
I'm very pleased to second.
Okay. All right, uh, all in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um, we have um, we have a bond resolution. Why don't we do, uh, well? We could also do the application to one, do we have that resolution? Uh, yeah, let's do that. Yeah, we have two of the other one. I apologize, there's a duplication in here. This is what happens when a supervisor's assistant is not there. Yes, you get duplicates. Okay, uh, resolution fifty-four is approving the submission of an application to the State Controller for the establishment of a sewer district number one uh, pursuant to section two oh nine H of the Town Law. A requirement, um, that you submit the proposal for the review by the Controller's Office, standard operating practice. Resolution fifty-four. Who would like to move it?
I would have to go with you.
Second.
The Jays have it. All in favor? Christine?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, um, and then finally, a bond resolution. This would be a resolution for any monies that were not, um, uh, able to be, uh, funded by grants or qualifications or appropriations. Fifty-five, watch this feeling. Authorizing construction acquisition. I think we can spell acquisition a little better than this one. Let's put one more eye on acquisition of equipment improvements for sewer district number one at an estimated maximum cost of six million five hundred ninety-six thousand and authorizing the issuance of serial bonds. Sewer system improvements, uh, speaks about the capacity of an additional fifty thousand gallons. Um, but once again, as with the other, uh, resolutions we just passed, it references that it's not listed action on the seeker. Um, the proposed resolution, uh, anticipates that the bonds would be of a duration greater than five years. And, um, the town board plans to finance the cost. Um, and that's the remaining cost for the resolution to raise the total cost, because that's the way it must. Um, six million five hundred ninety-six thousand hereby authorized to be issued. Uh, current funds are not required, subject to the terms and contents. And it authorizes the town supervisor to take certain actions, and that is resolution number fifty-five, a bond resolution related to the creation of the sewer district. Who would like to move bonds?
Just not moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Very good. It's very exciting, folks. Uh, we hope, uh, we hope that you, the general public, while you may not be one of those landowners who will have a property that, you know, perhaps will be of greater utility and go up in value, that you will see the value of having a dynamic, traditional neighborhood district, hopefully lots of fun and rewarding properties and businesses to go to.
And a healthy agriculture.
And, oh, yes, and that's, that little, that a little pesky thing called clean drinking water. Thank you, Julia. All right. Um, very good. Let's, uh, let's move on to number two, shall we? Um, of course, now I've got more scrolling than these fingers could ever handle. Please don't, uh, put the camera on that. People, uh, did, they will, we'll continue to move on, but what we have is, uh, we have to extend our agreement with the engineers, tie and bond, uh.
Keep going, you got a long way to go.
Okay. That's true in so many ways, and this is what happens, is it sort of scrolls. If we just get over there, we'll get cut out some of this. Look at that.
One above.
What's that?
One up.
One up.
Keep going.
That looks good, okay. Um, tie and bond has been working on, you know, working with us, uh, through an ARP process, um, previously, and this is to extend the services. And so this would be resolution number
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six. Um, authorizing an extension for the services for an additional two-year period. Um, we'll need them for, uh, this project for twenty-four and twenty-five, for sure. Um, if not longer, but let's, let's entertain this, shall we? Or not? Um, Jacob, what do you think? Fifty-six?
Sounds right to me.
You wanna move it?
Sure, so move.
All right, I'll second it. Um, all in favor? Christine?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Okay, and you have the, the agreement, which will be added, and we'll sign. More work, Brandy.
Long drive.
That's okay.
How much sleep are you getting this week?
We, we enjoy supporting the town with all of its various pursuits.
Wow, that was, you should be up here. We have resolution number fifty-seven now, don't we?
Yes.
Um, so we did get a grant, didn't we, for uh, Culver. It was a matching grant, but it paid for
Seventy percent.
Seventy percent. Um, and this is for the design, um, implementation of Culver. Um, and so, uh, we have a contract, we rewarded the grant, and now we have to approve the, um, contract, so.
I just have a question out of curiosity that does not pertain to the accepted grant agreement, but uh, have we identified likely funders for the actual work, once the design is completed?
If I may?
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, the town has been working for many years, um, in this stream of funding, first with the Culver inventory and asset management plan, which prioritized Culver replacement. Then the state has made available design funds, so we took the top priority Culver, um, applied to the design fund, so that's what's before you this evening. And then when the design's already, they make construction dollars. And then when the designs are ready, they make construction dollars available also, so the goal is to be able to access all the streams of funding to get through to construction.
She meant to use the pun streams of funding for the
Sure.
That's why she is. Resolution fifty-seven, dated June eleventh, accepting, uh, tributary restoration grant for engineering costs. And I assume, well, this is by
Yeah, before you vote.
Oh, on DB, sorry, it was supposed to be building, it's, uh, a DB, it's a Culver. For the match, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. You're only second because you want the critters to be able to pass the information. Uh, all in favor, William?
Aye.
Julia?
I already said your second, but
Jacob?
I'll go vote again. Just confirm.
Well, we can tell how much sleep I'm
Confirm that a second is a aye.
Aye.
It's like a double negative, she voted against it. Uh, we have one more resolution on engineering contract, great commanding has been doing a lot more roadwork. We need to extend their contract as well. Where's that resolution?
You did, you did miss, uh,
Well, I just said the restoration, the
Oh, restoration grant, no, I mean the, the task order. That's convenient, wasn't it? Uh, so we have task order twenty twenty-four, um, and that is for the work that we spoke of, a hundred and nine thousand dollar grant, thirty percent match, um, for thirty-three thousand dollars, and, um, who would like to make a motion to approve this?
Second.
All in favor?
We have to add the
But you have to add the funding, I think it's D and B as well.
Thank you, DB.
Oh, add.
The DB portion is thirty-three thousand.
Not two.
Not two, it's an amount of
One forty-two.
I think it's one forty-two.
Yeah. Thirty percent match at thirty-three thousand. Uh, so this is, where are we at, to fifty-eight?
That was fifty-eight. Now we're at fifty-nine.
Fifty-eight was the resolution approving task order for engineering services regarding replacement of Willetts Drive West and East Culver.
Yes, this is fifty-nine.
Was it fifty-eight?
Yeah, it was fifty-eight.
Yeah, so this task order is fifty-nine, fifty-eight is the, um, one before that, is the, uh, the actual acceptance of the funds.
So?
So the task order should be for fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine. Fifty-nine, approving the task order.
Fifty-seven was accepting the grant.
Yeah.
Fifty-eight would be the task order for services for the grant.
We're about a border.
The task order was fifty-eight?
There's two extension of engineering services.
Yeah, did we complete the votes for the task order, or are we still hung up on?
No, we're getting the number in.
Wait, hold on, the, uh, sorry, I don't have it in my
Tributary restoration is fifty-seven, accepting the grant, yeah.
Yeah.
Then the task order is fifty-eight.
Right.
The task is a fifty.
Cause I have fifty-one is
I am.
Fifty-five is the bond, fifty-six is the extend time bond by two years, fifty-seven is the Culver rate, fifty-eight is the acceptance of the restoration grant. Fifty-eight is
With the extension by two years.
No, you got your number.
I got one off.
Yeah.
So fifty-six was the extension of the time bomb.
Yep.
Fifty-seven was the acceptance of the tributary restoration grant, that's fifty-seven.
Oh, I skipped one, okay. Sorry, that's why that
Task order for, uh, Willetts is fifty-eight, and now we're on fifty-nine, which is for great man.
Yes, now we're on fifty-nine, yeah, fifty-eight is the
I don't think we completed the vote.
No, we
You didn't do the task order.
Yeah. I thought we were doing it all that.
Task order, I think, was moved by
But before
I, I moved it.
I moved it.
But it's, I confirm with Chris, it's one oh nine, is what should be the aggregate amount of one oh nine, so if I approved.
One oh nine, not one forty-two?
Not one forty-two.
One oh nine is for the grant, no?
Yeah, sorry, I thought, I thought we were, we were still talking about this one, okay.
The learning of that would now therefore be a resolve is confusing in the task order. We just know it ought to be total.
The task order should be for the total cost, the grant acceptance is for the seventy percent, which is a one oh nine, so.
So one forty-two less thirty percent is one oh nine.
Correct.
Okay.
The word major.
I, that was the whole thing, okay.
Seventy-eight is one forty-two.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. We do, we do know what we're doing up here, we do occasionally
We got fifty-eight resolutions in before we started messing up.
Pretty good.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, Christine?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Myself, aye, okay, good. Who's in charge of the numbering around here?
Now we're pre-doing it.
Now, pre-doing, we have a resolution to, uh, extend that contract, that would be fifty-nine, an addendum, uh, for services. And I don't think twenty twenty-four is correct there, I think that's for dated February three, twenty twenty. I don't think that was extended.
That's right.
That is
We entered it to twenty twenty-one. And then you're extending it now.
I'm looking at the addendum.
Addition of years.
Okay. Uh, that's fifty-nine, uh, who would that?
Nobody yet.
Somebody, somebody from Iowa should bring that. Um, second, Christine, please.
Second.
All in favor, Julia, William, myself, that's fifty-nine. Um, before we say goodbye to Brandy. Brandy is going to be, uh, coming back, uh, to us, uh, whether in the real world or the metaphysical world. After we all come up for air later this week, um, for the grant cycle that is due on the fourteenth, we are going to be crushing it. Um, we're gonna have, um, a long list of those grant opportunities, the CFA, including ones that we could possibly, uh, piggyback on for this project as well. I've sent you, uh, the Hudson Valley Regional Council Mayland's Guide, but just did receive today, did you, so I will forward that to you as well. Please take a look at every one of the programs, cause there's a couple there that we could use for some of the second stuff, uh, for, uh, just especially as it relates to energy, transportation, um, streets, um, some of the non-typical. And Brandy has a, do you see what she's got there? So that's like a whole menu, where, uh, got your spreadsheet, and so, uh, early next week, if not later this week, we'll get together, local over, all that. We'll disseminate all the potential options, um, and if we have any energy left, we'll actually, we could, Brandy, on this one, um, on these grants. It's wonderful that they consolidated into one time period, but it also doesn't recognize that it doesn't allow us to
Yeah, if you apply for more than one thing.
More than one thing, yeah, lots of things, yeah, so.
It's a nightmare.
Anyway, so.
Can I just point out that there are two, so most of the CFAs are due on, um, July thirty-first. So most of the program guide information that you're gonna look at is, is July thirty-first. There are two that are outside of that. One is Hudson River Retuary Funds, which are due on the seventeenth of July, so that one's a little bit earlier. So if we're thinking about projects in that funding stream, we should probably move to start that, you know, next week and talk about it at your second meeting. Um, and then there's also Green Resiliency Grant, which would be for green infrastructure projects, um, and those are due August sixteenth, so we have a tiny bit more time for those, so. Those two that I spoke of are not in the CFA Resource Guide, don't know why they're put out separately, but if anybody needs those, they're available either online or even call our office and we can send them over to you.
Good. Um, yeah, and an update, we did submit our, uh, actions for clean energy community, we will have enough points to get that next, um, project awarded another hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And I think we're actually knocking on the door of the third level for about two hundred and fifty thousand, so, um, we're going to need to make some decisions um, about what those projects are. Obviously, we've identified, uh, Cooking Camp Solar. Um, and again, for the folks at home, it's a small area that was previously mined almost a century ago. Sits well back of the roads, sits down below, it's not something that you see when you drive by the cooking camp farm. It was not, um, farmed, um, in our lifetime. Um, so we, we can appropriate it towards that, um, we are meeting with the school district, they did receive their nicer to funding towards the buses. So we wanna see if there's anything we can do to assist them to, uh, make sure they get the infrastructure they need so they can continue on the path to reducing that hundred and eighty-eight thousand gallons of diesel that they do that. So, yeah, we'll be back talking about those grants as well at our next meeting. Okay, um, hi, hi, uh, I think we can say we connect to Brandy.
You could say more time maybe, if you have any more time.
We, we, we don't have any. We don't have any because, um, uh, building and zoning needed more information on this, a lot of additions that's been made.
Okay.
Um, and so, uh, we're, we're good there.
Wait, hold on, Ruella, um, I thought we were ready to move forward with.
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not, Brandy needs more information, yeah.
Well, just to set the pH, this is the public hearing, but it's up to you.
He wasn't ready, apparently he was gonna require, um, getting some, uh, DC, getting DC out there, so they don't even know where the wetlands are
Yeah.
at this point, and so there's no proposal yet for where the subject and where all that stuff will go. So we're gonna need some information, or we'll, we'll just be in the dark.
Okay, I agree.
So we look to, to, to Brandy to let us know, uh, when it's ready for setting the public hearing, when it's complete, essentially, when we can take action. That said, Brandy, uh, it's a little early, but
Thank you, nice to be here.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to hang out.
Thanks for all your, sorry, your questions. Um, okay, Jacob?
Yes.
Mr. Lee is off to, um, having a bargain. Would you, um, would you kindly update us, uh, two things we wanted to discuss tonight? Um, let's do brine first, um, and just, where, where are we with that, and let's see if we can keep moving that ball forward.
Yeah, so we had our presentation, um, that was two months ago, something like that, um, sort of explaining why um, it might be an attractive option for us to pursue brine as a tool for treating our roads in winter. And we asked Teresa to look into some options for that, um, one of the things she provided, that we have in the packet, is a, um, estimate for, I think it's a brine boss. Sort of the equipment that would be needed to pursue this, so having a tank, bulkhead installation, and then great estimate. So the cost for that, from the quote we have in the packet, is a hundred and four thousand seven hundred, um, that's the only quote we have at this time, but, um, one of the other things that Teresa provided was some, um, grant opportunities that might provide some funding for purchase of this equipment. And knowing that we are, you know, about a third of a year away from the next winter, maybe. I think it's a good time to be pursuing, you know, options for this, to see what we might be able to get purchased and in place to use for winter twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
So, uh, seems to make sense, I, I think a lot of others disagree, that we go out and, uh, apply for some grant monies, right?
Yeah.
I think one of the great opportunities at least is new this year, um, and so it would be a nice opportunity to be a leader in this work.
Um, and this would be just sort of an estimate for what we would use, we'd have to go out, uh, and do, you know, proper procurement on this.
Yes.
But a good, good basis for understanding what, what the cost maybe may not be, um, and for the grant application. Um, any thoughts, I mean, do we, do we want to remind me that program when that was all, as I didn't know. Well, we'll get that, I have that on, uh, somewhere, but, um, so is that how we want to proceed, I think? Uh, we're all, we're all on board with moving forward with this, we've heard enough of the benefits and, uh, um, successful case studies, town of Ryanback, very, very happy with doing it, I think Bard College, right?
Yeah.
Same thing.
Yeah, I've only heard good things from, from Mike over at Bard, who's done it as highway superintendent and also at Bard.
And I imagine for highway too, it's, it would be helpful to them, a little less stressful, if you pre-treated the road in the event of and a storm comes in a lot earlier than you thought, you're not sweating bullets about, um, you've got something on the ground.
It's more efficient with the materials, it's better on the environment.
Right. And there's some, some talk of, you know, could, could manage overtime as well, you would, you would have a little less overtime, but frankly, the overtime, I think, is not gonna be less. I think it's just gonna transfer, what we've seen is actually, we need to crew for trees now, you know? The nature of climate change is we're seeing a lot more wind, we're seeing a lot, uh, wetter grounds, um, and so I think there'll be a lot of, a lot more of that cleanup unfortunately. Good, uh, any more thoughts, we all want to move forward on, apply for the grant?
Because this subprogram of the water quality.
It's a W equip, yeah, W equip, thank you for reminding me, and I think this well, this fits well within the allowances there, right? Great. Um, so did we just decide we're gonna apply to W equip, I think we did.
Something like that.
All right, um, a, a motion?
Brandy, come back.
Exactly, well, why, why don't we just do this now, um, I'd like a motion to, uh, authorize the town supervisor to prepare a grant.
Prepare and submit.
Prepare and submit. I think I have time to submit, I'll be back to you, recording, prepare a grant application to the WQIP program for equipment to, uh, institute a brine program. Um, limitation, uh, in the amount not to exceed, let's come up with a number, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I don't know, just for the you know, the
You'd like to?
Okay, who would like to make that motion?
Some move.
Thank you, Jacob. Christine, would you like to second that motion?
I thought maybe Julia might want to.
Oh, of course, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Christine. You're welcome.
Yes, uh, Julia's very passionate about this topic, um, okay, uh, all in favor, William?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
It's resolution number sixty.
Um, well, I think we did it by motion.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's by a motion.
I think motion's good enough.
And I would just add that as we get into discussion with Teresa and into the details of the grant guidelines, so that, that same funding category includes improvements to salt storage. And so if it seemed that any of those would be appropriate in addition, I would be willing to entertain this.
That's a great idea.
Well, we did apply for W, but for unless the shut down, we were denied.
I remember we were denied, and I didn't know if there was a way to tell.
We can roll out.
Quiet again.
As, as we're selling our brine equipment, maybe it's, yeah, maybe it falls under the shed, we have to
We may have a smaller, smaller needs by salt.
Yeah, can move it away from the whole, we're
It certainly has. Um, great, we are moving right We are moving right along, folks. And in fact
So there's the other part of it.
The uniforms, would you, yeah, help me understand uniforms, because I know we've had previous discussions, not only with Highway, but with the union about this. I think the members wanted to actually get their own uniforms, is what we were told, rather recently. And then be responsible, because the services were not matching up with their needs when they were getting it. But there was a proposal perhaps to, again, just one estimate at the moment, but
Yeah, so Teresa wrote us a letter, it's in the packet, and includes some materials from a company that could provide uniform services That's different from the current provider, the current supplier. Teresa expressed some concerns about missing items, lack of replacement uniforms on a regular basis, Failure for pickup and return in a timely fashion, hasn't been very satisfied with the current supplier. So she said there's not a contract currently in place, but they've had an arrangement with the company for over ten years. She feels the customer services declined to the point she wants to look at another supplier, so we have a quote in the packet From Cintas, who offers uniforms for a number of local organizations, businesses, municipalities, who give good reviews. So Teresa, you know, is showing this as a contract period for three years, with the needs being tailored to the needs of each staff member. And the quote is based on Amia contract pricing, so The change from the current monthly estimate, which is two hundred and thirty-eight dollars a yearly of three thousand dollars, Would be to eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars monthly, or to nine thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars annually. Asking for a budget adjustment of seven thousand dollars to move from the current supplier to Cintas. So she's noting that the rate hasn't changed in the last ten years. It's not really reflective of the real costs of providing uniforms, so we might have a deal under the current arrangement, but it doesn't, like, services actually meet our needs. So a deal that doesn't actually meet your needs isn't really a valid deal. So that's one thing that, she noted, she also talks about the staff members washing things themselves. Definitely looking for work, because the company's not meeting the needs of washing uniforms, so That's something that I know she's really concerned about. It might make sense to see if there are other suppliers, to see if there's something they can have. Maybe there are other reputable companies that could have a lower cost, or
I believe that cost puts us in the mandatory procurement
Well, she's going to need to get, yeah, it's very coincidental.
It does, she needs, or it's piggybacking, so Cintas is like a source wall account. So it could, I don't know enough, and Chris doesn't know enough about Amia, I've never heard of them, but In theory, if that's a state contract or another state contract, it could, but then You would need to authorize a master purchase agreement, because it's like source wall, so you'd have to authorize a contract with Cintas, and then they could What if she, if she confirms it's complying with another state's procurement? If you're, it has to comply with your piggybacking for another state's procurement. So it'd have to be subject to, I mean, Chris's review.
Yeah.
Okay. And I know that you were also talking about potentially having, you know, our uniforms, right, so having at least something that goes through the highways staff, right?
This was, this was during labor negotiations, this is something they had asked for, so I think we maybe want to get some
It'd be good to have a quote to see what the cost of that would be, whether it's
Right.
More cost effective, do that, if that's what the staff wants, right, it makes sense that that would be It could be a better option than having a service that we pay for that way.
I think we want to get Teresa's input on that as well, if she thinks that that's going to work. There's nothing like having your uniform, however, knowing
Yeah. It does seem like Teresa's interested in this option, just because she wrote the letter, provided the quote, you know, has followed up on it, so I think we, we want to move sort of quickly on this, but I think it's a matter of looking at it.
Get more feedback, which, which is the best way to go, because if they want to have their own uniforms, and they definitely seem to indicate that That's something that has, not because we want to, but it has to be negotiated, it has something that's required.
Well, I think you could certainly communicate to her that we hear her concern, and we would like to come up with a solution that works. Obviously, we don't want people kind of copping out, the uniforms, and saying, you do your jobs.
But there's no dearth of uniform companies, I mean, you know, there's a number of companies, that's I know that company, but there are many that provide for firefighters, you know, restaurants, I mean, and those are large companies, and they tend to Pretty broad range of what they provide, so I'd like to get an idea of what the range is, not just from Cintas, but from the other companies.
Okay. So follow-up, let's see if we can take some action. Correspondence, do we have any correspondence before we enter a term, we're going to return?
Did Mr. get it correct?
Or as my grandfather used to say, R O N G. You're wrong. I think that's all, all we have, hopefully we'll have some good news on the salt Culver by later in our next meeting. I want to thank everybody who came out for that next session. Want to thank Deputy Supervisor Bill Hamel. He not only prints out paper, he helps with shredding it. We had a good turnout for shred day just last weekend, it concludes our very long list of events for the spring season, many of which are focused on trying to help constituents with costly endeavors in the environment. All right. Thank you all for joining us tonight. At this time, I would like to make a motion, I will go into attorney-client session. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Jacob, Jacob.
Thank you all. Again, thanks for joining us, stay happy and healthy.